Thank you. I'll ask our clerk to do the roll call.
Mr. Conover.
Here.
Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Here.
Ms. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mrs. Frazier. Ms. Smith. Ms. Hogan.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson. Mr. Merlino. Mr. Strow.
Here.
Mr. Wilde.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Beatty. Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Scheffler. Mr. Garrity.
Here.
Chairwoman Seber.
Here.
Forum is established.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of the Budget Committee, but in particular, the hard work of our Budget Officer Frank Thomas. I'd like to officially turn the meeting over to our Budget Officer and happy to switch places with you.
Well, good morning. I thought I would draw a little bigger crowd, but I guess not. Okay, well, we'll get started. The proposed 2022 budget for Warren County. I would like to first thank Madam Chair Seber for the opportunity to be the Budget Officer. I appreciate it. Appreciate working with her. It seemed to have worked out pretty good for the most part. I'd also like to thank the Budget Team, County Administrator Moore, Dammie, Kristy Miller, and Rob Lynch. Without those folks, you wouldn't have a budget to look at. I can guarantee you that. I'd also like to thank the Department Heads for their efforts in putting together their budgets and their staff for meeting with us and the discussions that we had. They're always informative and eye-opening sometimes. They don't always get what they want, but you know, that's the way things go. And lastly, I think I'd like to thank the employees of the county. They're our most important people. They're what makes this operation work. Without our employees and the work that they do each day, the county would be in a tough position. Overall, I think this is a fairly good budget. It's not perfect, but it's pretty good. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, and I would like to go through the PowerPoint presentation rather than have a... I don't have a speech. So this is what I think the tentative budget should entail for 2022. And the goals of this budget is to continue to stay in compliance with the property tax gap, which we've overwhelmingly done. To responsibly invest in the county resources and to protect the county's long-term financial position and be able to sustain it. And I think, currently, I think we're in a very good spot. The proposed budget, again, our goal is to continue our compliance with the property tax gap. And the tax gap allowed a 3.81% or $1,758,217 increase over the 2021 tax levy of $46,153,902. This was an option. It's one that I didn't think would be palatable at all, not almost a 4% increase in the tax levy. I didn't think that that was where we should go, and fortunately, we don't have to go there. This budget calls for a levy of $46,831,961. That remains under the tax gap, and it represents a 1.4% increase or $678,059 over this year's budget. The new levy means that the county tax rate will decrease by 2 cents approximately per $1,000 of assessed value to $389.9 per thousand. This means that a homeowner with a $200,000 property will pay about $4 less in 2022 county tax. And the reason that that is possible is because of our equalized fund value or full value, I'm sorry. It has increased $236 million since 2020. And further on in here is another graph that shows it over the last five years, and it grows each year. And that's a great thing, actually, because, again, you can raise the $678,000 and it gets spread out amongst more values. Speaks well for the growth of Warren County. This reduced tax rate in effort to stay well below the tax gap reflects sensitivity to the economic toll of the COVID-19 on our taxpayers, not everybody else. This proposed budget with the goal of responsibly investing in county resources, it includes gross appropriations of $173,338,735, which is an increase from the 2021 COVID austerity budget of $158,785,42. A large majority of this increase is $7.8 million is due to a record level investment in the county's road paving program. The county also settled contracts this year with three of its largest labor unions, the CSCEA, PBA, and the Alliance. And this budget proposes a modest 3% cost of living adjustment for all non-union employees. The first such increase since before COVID, so it's been two years since our non-union folks have received any pay increase. And that also includes the electeds. It's everyone. Additional investments proposed in this budget include four additional sheriff's deputies, an enhanced cybersecurity, additional funds for OFA for the senior meal program, continued investment in the public health COVID-19 response, an improved recycling program, additional veteran services and planning department personnel, and new grant-funded programs in several departments, including probation and in the legal defense. The four deputies that are put into this budget were taken out, I believe, in 2009 after the downturn of the economy and the housing bubble at that time. And over the years, the budgets I've been involved with, Sheriff's Department has always asked for these positions back. And I think we're in a position where we can do that, so I included them into the budget. And I think it's needed, you know, I think. There's also funding for a ninth Assistant District Attorney and for a new legal clerk. We approved these a while ago, a few months ago, but they were not in the budget. It was... So now they are. Veteran Service Officer, a senior planner for the Planning Department. Planning is very important to the towns. A lot of towns rely on the Planning Department. There's a cybersecurity and network analyst that's been added. The recycling coordinator, we hired one of them a few, couple of months back, and that's funded in this budget. Overall, on the salaries, the new positions, the merit increases and reclassifications, including the 3% for the non-union folks, it was $489,892. But it also generates an additional $88,000 in revenues, which nets out to $401,439. The attorneys throughout the county, additional cost was $96,199. But they also, some of them, generate revenue of $34,588, so that nets out at $64,655. And then the personnel requests and new positions, it's $573,586. And if you add all those together, it's $139,680. As far as the pay raises for Department Heads and some of the non-union employees, I'd like to thank the Chairwoman, Supervisor Beatty, and Supervisor Kramer for their help going through the evaluation process. Again, like I said here, I think at the last board meeting, it's not 100%, but it's better than it has been from my experience in the past. It definitely is a step forward. So thank you. The next goal is protect the county's long-term financial position. The appropriation of a fund balance from the general fund remains at $1 million. It's been that way for several years. Funding of the reserves for capital investment continues at an enhanced level. This is for vehicles and IT equipment. The vehicles, a portion of that fund increased by $250,000 to $642,000. And the IT remains the same at $154,000. However, through the budget process and meeting with the Department Heads, each Department Head was asked to make a list of any IT needs, computers, projectors, etc., that they may need. And the plan is to fund that out of the American Recovery Plan money. So thereby, that didn't necessitate an increase in the IT money. The vehicles, there's vehicles for probation, building codes, and health services, and probably others. But a vast majority of that is for cars for the Sheriff's Department. Those cars are used hard, you know, and they have a lot of miles on them. And at some point, it comes a time where there's a lot of them with a lot of miles, and you have to buy several at one time. So that... And also, there was a request for the boats that are used on Lake George and the other lakes around the county are getting old. And so part of that could be for that. I didn't specify. There's not enough to do everything, but we'll leave that up to the Sheriff. There's also a 6% increase in the snow and ice contract to the towns that maintain county roads during the winter. That totals up to about $94,000 total. This budget calls for effective planning to maintain major county public works infrastructure and keep these large costs predictable and affordable along into the future. And there's also $179,000 of increased appropriation in the contingent fund, and this is to cover anticipated additional personnel costs. One of them is the county attorney. Road projects, Warren County's 250 miles of road, roads need consistent maintenance. And that program traditionally has cost between $3 and $3.5 million per year. Most years, some years, it was definitely cut and less than that. And due to these cuts in prior years, we are still behind on the paving projects. And the longer that you're behind on these projects, the more expensive they become. And now with the fuel costs, they're going to become that much more expensive. So in order to get back to a budget position where we have some stability in this program, we would need to invest approximately $5.5 million per year over the next several years. So if we don't spend this money, the out-year costs increase. This not only delays the date when eventually we catch up, but it also makes every year from now until then more expensive than it has to be and with less to show for the investment. Current rates for a five-year ban are close to 1%. The most recent ban the county treasurer did was five years ago, and those rates were 2.25%. We can borrow money at a very low rate in order to make necessary investments now that will help stabilize costs later. And as everyone knows, the Board has authorized the treasurer to borrow, I think it was $7.9 million, to cover... $6.2 of that was for the roads. Some was for a retaining wall along Lake George and the town of Bolton and also for countryside, for improvements to our countryside. I know Stony Creek just borrowed $182,000, a lot less than almost $8 million. And that's a five-year ban, and we got a rate of 1.49%. It's not free money, but it's pretty cheap. The tax levy amount of the paving will remain, is the same in this budget at $1,231,053. And with the surplus road funds, the total county funds totals up to like $1.7 million. The goal is to get caught, to catch up on our paving, to get the roads back in good shape to where we can maintain them, and my hope would be that we would land around $4 million or maybe $4.5, somewhere in that area that would keep us even and keep us, you know, so we don't run into this situation, at least for a good period of time. Overall, the budget has $10.5 million of paving projects next year compared with $3.25 million for this year, for 2021. And again, $6.2 million would come from the ban proceeds, $2.6 million from anticipated state aid, the CHIPS funding paved New York and extreme weather funding. The state fortunately increased all those this year. I don't anticipate that they'll cut that unless something drastic happens. So hopefully, maybe they'll even bump it up a little more. And the remaining $1.7 million is from county taxes and surplus road funds. And again, this is to establish a new predictable and affordable baseline that we can invest in our roads each year and be able to afford and stay on top of it, hopefully. The next slide is a graph of revenues and expenses, and this is budgeted revenue and appropriations. And as you can see, it's a considerable jump over 2021. But there's a considerable jump in revenues also. The next is the property values. And as I mentioned earlier, you can see on this graph that each year, we've had pretty good growth. 2020 was a little bit less, but each year, you know, Warren County's doing okay, I would say. Significant revenues. The first is sales tax collections. This budget anticipates a sales tax collection of $56,621,485. State aid of $16,266. Federal aid of $11,463. Departmental income of $12.5 million and other income of $13.3 million. There's no American Rescue Plan Act dollars in this budget. The sales tax over what was budgeted for 2020 and 2021 is up $1,605,590. Approximately half of that, or $26.5 million, goes to the towns and the distributions. And $601,500 goes to Glens Falls to satisfy the sales tax agreement. And part of the sales tax collections also is the online sales. And we received an email from Dave Lucas with NISAC. And he was, you know, kind of answering our questions about the internet sales, if it was going to be there and if it was going to be sustainable. And his comments is that he was comparing it with 2019. In the first six months of 2019, this money was not collected. It started up, it started ramping up in September. So he compared it back to that timeframe from September until the end of 2019, and then he compared what we've collected, what he thinks we've collected up to September. And he's saying it was about $5.2 million. So his estimate is that that was probably a little more than what it really is. He's estimating that we'll receive about $3 million a year in internet sales and projecting about a 12% growth in that amount each year. So it ends up being about 5% of our total sales tax. So, you know, I think it's realistic that we will receive, if everything stays the way it is and the economy keeps going, we will receive the additional sales tax. And if you look at the sheet, I think Rob sent one out this morning, we're still up, well, about $8 million. We'll probably lose some of that, but that's a lot. The next item is items driving revenues. And as I explained, the sales tax is a big part of it. The occupancy tax on October 14th, that was up 24%. State aid, federal aid of $710,000. Rental payments for the DSS offices. Our Buildings and Grounds Department had negotiated with the state and put in for an increase, and this is the increase. And I would like to say kudos to him. I think that's... Can't ask for much more than that. That's a big number, $393,145 in increase in rental payments for the state operations and DSS buildings. And lastly is the mortgage tax. I put in another $250,000 in mortgage tax. The next slide shows the revenue details as far as sales tax. 2019 actual, 2020 actual, the 21 budget and 22 proposed. The next slide is the mortgage tax. Looking at the numbers and looking back over the years, we anticipate that we will make that amount. Looking at the numbers and and looking back over the years, we anticipate that we'll be that we will make that amount. Items driving appropriations. Significant items driving increase or decrease in appropriations. And the first one is wages. About a million of that or so is is new positions and also pay raises for the non-union. I believe the rest of it is for for union personnel. The health insurance actually decreased or increased only 63,402, which is great. You know, that's that's great too. The one big thing that does help this budget a lot is is the retirement cost. There was about a 14% decrease in in the county's overall cost to the retirement system. So that that figures out to about 800,000 dollars. And that that goes a long ways towards making this budget possible, actually. And I I believe that that it's probably going to stay in that range. Because my understanding is of how they do the retirement system, I believe it's on a seven year rolling average. So unless the economy takes a nosedive, I don't I I think at least for two or three years, I think it'll remain in that relative area of percentage of contribution if they follow their own guidelines. After that, who knows? But who knows anyways, really? There was also reductions. If you recall, I believe it was last month, there was a resolution where we appropriated 251,000 of fund balance from three funds, general fund, road fund and the machinery fund. And these were all like one-time expenses. So so we did that, took it out of the budget, that they reduced the amount of money that we'd have to raise. There was also approximately a million dollars of reductions in requests that had been made by department heads. So over over the course of the budget and then looking at it, we reduced the ask by a million dollars. We also took out 375,000 in tribal compact monies. This is the video lottery terminals at the reservations on for the casinos. We haven't received that money in a couple of years and we figured it was best to take that out. The county roads is an increase of 6,423,423,000. And our debt service went down 65,900 dollars. The the next slide shows the cost detail of the health insurance of what was adapted in 21 and proposed for 22. And the one after that is the retirement graph. The next is the fund balance appropriations of all the funds, the general fund, county road fund, road and machinery fund, occupancy tax and the Westmelt Legacy Fund. That totals almost 3 million dollars at 2,993,067 dollars. Future priorities. And first item is to continue to look for efficiencies that will cut costs while providing quality services. I think I think we all do that. I think all our department heads do that. And I think we do a pretty good job at it, to be honest with you. Can always look for more revenue to offset the expenses and keep the property taxes in check and control the use of surplus. As you all know, I'm a big proponent of a one-time expenses. I mean, if you can pay cash for it, then that's that's the way to do it. But again, you can't go crazy doing that either. I continue to plan for investments in Warren County's future, including infrastructure, economic development and workforce development. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we established what I called reserves. They're not reserves. They're assigned assigned accounts. If the reserve gets much much more complicated, you sign the account, you can liquidate when you when you want to or when the board wants to. I anticipate at the end of 2021, 2020, our general fund balance increased to 26,800 dollars. While some of the sales tax will probably be swept or could possibly be swept by the state in a reconciliation, I have a feeling that our our fund balance will be 30 million plus at the end at the end of this year. And with that, I didn't do anything with the any proposals with the assigned funds. But I think that's something that the board in in the future should look at, especially if we have that kind of fund balance. I mean, I think that's a lot of money to have just sitting there. We should prioritize it and decide what we what we want and how we're going to take care of it. So that would be my my opinion on that. Just set it aside. We'll continue to advocate for the county taxpayers with the state at at the state capital. And continue to enhance county departments by adapting to new challenges and promoting good manners. And I think we do that well. Most of the time. So with that, I I think I think Warren County is in in very good financial shape at the at the moment. We've had we've had good growth over over the last few years. If the economy stays up and keeps chugging along, we'll be we'll be in in good shape. There are some some headwinds out there with inflation and increased fuel costs and that affects a lot of things. So it's, you know, it's not guaranteed, that's for sure. But I think that in the next few years, we can make some good positive strides and get some things accomplished. And with that, I would like to well, we do have one more sheet, the tax rate. As you can see, most everyone's went down. Some of us that didn't. So with that, I'd like to thank the chairwoman again for the opportunity and thank you for listening to me. And if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them. That's Supervisor Wilde.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd just like to get a little more clarity on the fund balance. We're projecting about 30 million out of 172. Is that what I heard you say?
In sales tax. Yeah, right, in general, in general fund, that right.
Okay, I'm just in terms of our reserve. How is it? How is it doing as compared to the last three or four years? In terms of percentage of our annual budget?
I'd have to look at the audit to see what that is. I I believe that if I saw that in there, I think it was around 68% of our levy, I believe.
Okay, I'm just I'm just trying to see if it's if we're maintaining that rainy day fund, so to speak, at the level that we should be.
Right.
Or whether there should be more in it. So I'm looking for some insights.
I think we are. I think last year's budget, I think with the reductions in in holding the departments from spending money, I think definitely was a big boost to the to the bottom line of the general fund by at least, I would say, 3 million dollars. Been my experience over the years that what's budgeted, you you usually end up with 1 million to 1.3 million that doesn't get spent. It's still there. But that was unusual circumstances also.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hope that answered your question. Supervisor Conover?
Thank you, Frank. First, great job. Great job. Great presentation. I'm particularly pleased with the dollars that are being appropriated for reconstruction of roads. Reconstruction of roads, very expensive process. And those dollars historically have been difficult to come by. I like the thinking that's gone on here. If we can't do it now, then when can we do it? Also, let's keep in mind that a reconstructed road requires less continued maintenance. A reconstructed road in modern standards is a safer road. A reconstructed road also is more environmentally friendly. We use less salt. We didn't apply more modern stormwater management to our reconstructed road. I think overall, I think it's a win-win-win. And I think that the maintenance of the continued maintenance of that reconstruction program going forward is really needed. And and I thank you for kicking it off, you and the team for kicking it off the way you have. I think it's I think it's a huge step in in the right direction. And of course, you would expect that, I suppose, from the chairman of the DPW committee, but I think it's a it's a win-win move forward like that. And I congratulate you and the budget committee for the budget, but also to what you're doing relative to beginning to address some of this infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bremer.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Thomas. I'll reiterate that it's a it's a great budget. I'm super happy to see the tax rate going down. I know that a couple of the big items on our expense side are the employee wages. And you mentioned those department head evaluations. I think that was a really important process. And I'm glad that we went through that under the chairwoman's leadership because it does make the process a little bit more objective than we had in the past. And I agree with Supervisor Conover about and and yourself about the investment in the roads. I think that is important long run. With respect to Supervisor Wilde's comment, you know, when I got on this board, we were still struggling, I think, with the Great Recession and our fund balance wasn't very high. If I recall, was in the low 20s, maybe even a little bit under that. So we are definitely growing our fund balance. And that is one of the questions that I wanted to ask you, Supervisor Thomas, as a representative from Glens Falls. If you look at our tax rate, ours is one of the highest on that list. And, you know, people in Glens Falls don't have really high incomes, generally speaking. And we don't have really highly valued properties. So it's something I'd like to ask if we can use more of that fund balance, which is over 30 million, you're saying, or growing to that, to try to lower our tax rate. I know it's already been lowered. Is there anything that more that we can do on that side in order to lower the tax rate a little bit more without doing anything to jeopardize our tax cap situation, which I know is can become problematic if we lower it too low in any one year? Thank you.
Thank you. You know, that's I'm I'm not sure exactly how you would do that, but you could definitely do it by increasing the revenues. I mean,
If we increase the revenue based on fund balance, drive down the need for our tax levy.
It's going to increase everybody's or decrease everybody's tax rate.
Right, right.
Well, if you put enough money in there, it probably would.
Could you could you speak to where you came up with? What dollar amount is being appropriated? Is it this the 2.9 million, 2.9 million out of fund balance? Is that what's being used this year?
Yeah, out of the five, the five funds overall. The 1 million that's been in the general fund, I can speak to that probably most hopefully clearly. The way I look at that is is, you know, it's it's good to have that there, but in order to reduce that, you have to pay for it. So you have to add some revenue somewhere. So and it it doesn't really accomplish a lot. You know, I mean, it it lowers the amount of fund balance that you're spending, but it doesn't it doesn't, it's like a wash. You know, you put more revenue in and and that number goes down. Now, if you increase that, that's great and it feels good to win on the way up. But on the way back down, it gets a lot, a whole lot more difficult because you got to find the revenue to offset it. So, you know, you know, it's always an option.
I guess, yeah, if if I think that it's been at a million for a little the last few years, especially under you as as budget officer. And I just wonder if at this point we could do more with that, given that our sales tax and occupancy tax are steadily increasing. Is it, would it be an acceptable time to take a little bit more there without much of a risk? Like you said, on the downside, because at some point it's going to come back down, but and we don't want to hit our taxpayers then. But this is a time where people are still struggling with the pandemic and loss of income and that kind of thing. So with us sitting on 30 million dollars, I think maybe we can use some of that now.
Point taken. That's Supervisor Leggett.
Thank you. Two two things, Mr. Chairman. First, for Supervisor Bremer there, when you look at those equalized county tax rates, there's there's differences because of, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, is the assessed values of the town, how they come out. So if you take Chester or Lake George, for example, we're pretty close to 100% according to the state on our assessments of full value, you might say. So Glens Falls, to lower theirs, that particular rate, you would go through and perhaps do a reassessment and bring it back up to 100%. Am I correct on that or close to it? So if you wanted to see it come down to 389, you would need to read, go through your assessor's office and get things on to about 100% of equalization.
Supervisor Bremer.
Thanks. Thanks, Supervisor Leggett. Yeah, we are not at 100%. I I do fully realize that. But what was mentioned earlier is that the reduction in the tax rate impacts all of our residents. Yeah, I'd love to see the Glens Falls rate come down, but we can't do it just for Glens Falls. It would come down for everyone.
When you were mentioning on how high things are there, that's that's the reason why. And you would say that to your constituents as well.
Yep.
And the the second thing, Mr. Chairman, on the debt load here, we are reducing by 65,000. That does take into account the new debt we're taking on, the proposed.
No, no, that'll be next year.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Strong.
Well, thank you, Frank. I I do have to reiterate that you did a very nice job. I think it's conservative and I think it's good budget. I have to build on what Supervisor Conover said about the roads. What he said was exactly right on. In addition to what he said is we need to address that now, and you did. I congratulate that. We need to address our roads. And it was also brought out by you, and it's true. If you don't address it now, it's going to be a bigger burden for others down the it now, it's going to be a bigger burden for others down the road. And down the road, you know, the economic times may be perhaps less certain. So it's a good thing to address now. I want to congratulate you on that. On, on the issue of tax rate, it's not what it appeared. There's a relationship between tax rate, full assessment, assessment, equalization. There's a formula there. So when you see a tax rate, you have to know the story behind it. Glens Falls is being reassessed right now, and will be at 100% next year. Others of us, because of increased values, may not be 100% next year, even though we try to be. It's very difficult to chase that market. But the bottom line is, I think you proposed a very good mark, a very good contract. I have a concern about 30 million. It's a 173 million dollar contract, and I don't know if 30 million's enough. I, I hope it is, but it's certainly a minimum. I wouldn't want to dig into it any further. Overall, very good budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations, and thank you to you and your team on, on the budget. I, I also want to thank my colleagues for, for pointing out the importance of, of road work and infrastructure. My first look traditionally has, has been in human resources. And over the past two years, county employees have risen to the, the occasion, have answered the call, and it's been an all hands-on-deck type of, of, of work that we've been doing. And, and the county has benefited from that. So I, I think it's, it's fitting that we do see some monetary thanks in the budget towards those people who are doing the hard work, day in and day out. And so I, I appreciate that as much as I appreciate the, the road work projections too. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conover?
Yeah, just in terms of the general discussion, I mean, I, I think that there are two things to keep in mind on the fund balance. One is the application of the fund balance is a recurring revenue. It's something that we have to do every year. And if we don't have it, then we have to go find it somewhere. And so there's a difference between a revenue that, or an expense that's a one-time thing, and, and an expense that's in the budget as a recurring revenue. And that's the dilemma that you have with the application of, of significant amounts of the fund balances. What, what do you do if that revenue's not there in the future? That's number one. And, and, and that's a subject for discussion and, 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 and even debate. I mean, that's, that's why we're here. And, and I get that. The other thing to keep in mind is that, and the Budget Officer mentioned it in his remarks, is that if you look at the, at the capital needs that exist for the county, for example, the only place we have to go for those dollars are our fund balance. We could, we could today go into our fund balance and assign those, for example, to a new DPW building in Johnsburg. We could low, we could lower that fund balance by 3 million, 4 million dollars in one project, just like that. Or there aren't even a number of projects that we could, we could do that with. And the alternative to doing that, of course, is to go out and borrow, which I think is something that we're not. So I guess what I'm saying is, in thinking about the application of the fund balance within the budget, that I think there are two things, primary things to keep in mind. One is that this is a, this is a recurring revenue, something that you have to have every year. If you don't have it, you have to go find it somewhere else. And the other thing too, is to remember that those projects that we have in our communities going forward, that may come up in the next 12 months, may come up next 24 months, we're gonna need money for those projects. And the only place to go for that money is, is your fund balance. And, and you're absolutely right. To set up a reserve is a difficult thing, because once it's in there, it's very difficult to move it around. But it can be assigned, as you pointed out. And maybe that's something that we should do in the first pass here, is take a look at what a fund balance is, what projected to be, and what county projects we, we think that assignment should be directed toward, which is, I think, what you meant in your remarks. And I just wanted to elaborate on it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Garrity?
Yeah. You know, it's interesting that we got some extra funds and chips and everything, but has the state made any movement on all the social programs that they've done, those like early child intervention? I mean, those are big numbers. And until the state does their job with some of the social programs, type of programs, they reduce those on the county taxpayers. I think, I think from our standpoint, we should be writing the state and say, take those programs off the burden of the county taxpayers, because that goes directly to the cost of our budget. And I, I remember when we were looking at it one time, it was over $7 million. I don't know what it is now. And, because I think if you start using more fund balance to reduce your tax rates by pennies, it could come back and bite you, just like the wall in Lake George, or the wall by the tiki, those, those expenses that you don't plan for or know coming up. One thing I would ask, though, I would ask that we ask Kevin to look at our efficiencies in paving now, since we've taken it out in-house, and we do it mostly with contractors. We've gotta be saving a bunch of money in redos. I know we had a time where we were redoing a lot of roads over because we were kind of inefficient in-house, but now that we're out of house, we should be seeing more roads done in a more efficient manner, I would think. But the thing that kills me is, you know, we get a little bit of money for roads, which is important, but the social programs that we pay for in the budget are, are pretty costly. So, you know, if the state went in and reduced the social programs, I'd be off for reducing and using a little bit more of fund balance. But until they do that, I, I don't know if I'd use fund balance too much.
Sure. On the, the initial point on the children with special needs programs, early intervention, preschool, special education, I don't believe that the reimbursement rate has changed on that in quite some time, at least since I've been doing county budgets. This is, that's, this is my 11th county budget. Rob, I don't, I don't think that the reimbursement rate has changed on those two programs. Yeah, but what the state has done is they've made some policy-related changes over that same period of time. For instance, they, the state took on more of the administrative responsibilities for early intervention. The state has also tried to go, go after private insurance for, for certain costs that are related to those programs. So with the idea of decreasing the gross total, but the reimbursement percentages have stayed the same, I think that that's an issue that NISAC typically advocates for. They advocate, it was probably higher on their priority list 10 years ago than it is today, but I know it's still there.
And, and I know they did work on the Medicaid.
Exactly, yeah.
And that was, that was helpful to us.
Yeah.
Same with retirement. I'm, I'm really concerned about retirement. We all saw a drop at our town levels with the retirement cost, but what happens if they crash and burn? Because there was 23% increases on, on some of the times in the, in the past. So it's good that we're getting it, but it could go the other way.
Right.
Yeah. And that's what I worry about in terms of costs that'll come in, in addition to the stability of the economy, is that retirement number will come back up. And we're also starting, not next year, but the year after, we're gonna start paying off that five-year ban for the roads. It's gonna be about a million and a half dollars a year. So we are gonna need something in fund balance to address that.
Yes. And to, to speak to programs and Medicaid, I did see an email where our, our weekly shares for the last, I think, eight, nine weeks of this year was reduced, and that amounted to well over $1 million. So that it went down. And I, I'm not sure if that was state dollars. I think it might have been federal dollars. Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, it's, it is in our slide that we have state aid of $16 million, which is an increase, according to this, of $900,000. So I think that the state is certainly assisting us, along with the federal aid increase of 710,000. Brings us up to 11,463. I'm, I'm all about increasing our aid from the state if we want to advocate for that through NISAC. I think that's the way to go. We never make any progress on our own as Warren County in that particular area. The other thing I want to say is, if, if this isn't the appropriate time, I'm certainly happy to bring it up again at the time of the public hearing, to request additional use of that $30 million towards the tax rate. You know, pennies per thousand might not mean a lot to some people, but to other people, they do. And I don't think the county should be sitting on $30 million that we're not using. Yeah, we need a rainy, rainy day fund, but we could always raise money later if we needed to through the ban, like we're doing for the roads.
Anything else? With that, I'll turn it back to the chairman. Thank you.
Supervisor Thomas, I'm grateful every single day of this year that you said yes. Thank you for your hard work. Thanks for making sure that we're on the same page, and for communicating with our public, and for going above and beyond and working as closely as you have, not only with our treasurer, with Rob Lynch, but also with our county administrator. To watch this from a different perspective this year has been incredibly informative. And I'm, I know on behalf of our community, we're all very grateful. Job well done. At this point in time, we're gonna move on to the reading of the resolutions, please.
Resolution numbers 461 through 464, before you to be considered today, were distributed to the board and posted to the Warren County website on Tuesday, November 2nd, which met the deadline specified in the rules of the board. There have been no changes since those were distributed.
I'd like to have a discussion and public comment on our proposed resolutions. We'll start first with any public comment that's here today. I'd like to do public comment first, please. It doesn't sound like we have any public comments. So at this point in time, let's move on to discussion about our proposed resolutions by members of the board. Supervisor Stroud, I believe I saw your hand?
Yes, thank you. When it comes time, I'll be asking for a roll call on 463 and 464. You know, I, I don't know Larry Elman, never met him, wouldn't know him if he was in the room. I do know Robert Turwilleger. I think he's done an outstanding job, like the same previous Sam did, an outstanding job. I don't know why he's not there being appointed. Everything I've seen has been outstanding. Although I've put a roll call vote on that, that's the reason why. And the other one is negotiate and award vacation leave allowances, and there's no form numbers there. I don't like voting on something that I don't know what I'm voting on. All right.
Supervisor Stroud, if it's okay with you, why don't we take resolution 463, I think was your first one, for a roll call? Let's open up discussion on resolution 463 and see if there's any other discussion for 463. Supervisor Bremer?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I did want to say thank you to Robert Turwilleger for the great effort that he has put in over the last very many months, filling a very small county attorney's office and making sure that we were, kept the ship running. And you did a great job with your team, Ryan Dickey filling in on all kinds of things, and Amy Turkot doing a great job down there. We really appreciate your hard work. Thank you so much. And I also want to say thank you to all the supervisors who were involved in the interview process. We had those during personnel committee meetings, and obviously, any supervisor was welcome to come and see all of our candidates and hear from the candidates. We had great candidates. And the consensus from the committee members was to put forward Mr. Elman. He is a well-respected attorney and has a lot of experience, and he's going to do, I look forward to him, starting on Monday, he's going to do a great job. And he is certainly happy to join the team of Robert, Ryan, and Amy, and he, and his staff are gonna do a great job melding in with them, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion regarding 463. Supervisor Leggett?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I share Supervisor Stroud's concern, but I do trust the committee that interviewed them and will go with this particular nomination. I am a bit dismayed of the compensation package, though, because that is all part of the negotiation with the, an attorney and the whole package on there. At this point, it's, you know, trusting the process, and I hope this all works out well.
Thank you. Further discussion on 463. Supervisor Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd just like to reiterate that the committee spent a lot of time and effort in interviewing the prospective candidates. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Turwilleger, as Supervisor Bremer did, for a great job. And so the evaluations went on for a number of sessions, and I think if anybody had any comments or questions, that was the time to ask them to get to know the candidate. So anyway, I just think the process played out. We arrived at Mr. Elman, and I think it's a great choice, and will make a great county attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a hand in front of Supervisor Hogan. Oh, no, that's not a hand. Sorry, Supervisor Hogan.
That's all right. Thanks for, may I speak?
Of course.
I, I did participate in some of the process for the interviews, even though I wasn't on the committee. And it was well worth the time that I spent there to get to know these candidates. And, and they were all excellent. But I am very comfortable with this choice and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Garrity, was your hand up?
I too sat in on the process. The process was done openly and fair. You know, kudos to how the county attorney's office has, has run for the last eight or nine months. They've done a good job. One important thing to me is the county attorney's office will remain intact. It may be an addition to it, but I believe that the personnel working there now will remain intact. And that was important, that we take care of our employees, which I think we have done with this choice. And I look, look for great things in the county attorney's office in the future.
Thank you. Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I guess reiterating what Mr. Garrity said. In the room today, we have the sheriff and the undersheriff, and I think that's a perfect example of a team working together. Mr. Elman's success is going to be the department's success, and I think that he has a wonderful team of individuals to, to work with. And I think that that's gonna be the, the true response to the decision that we make today. It's gonna be team attorney, not just one individual. So, thank you.
I do have a comment about 463, but want to reserve that comment until we've heard from any other supervisors that would like to be heard. Anyone else? At this point in time, I think Supervisor Driscoll hit, hit it directly, the nail on the head here, which is, we are Team Warren County. Robert, as our acting county attorney, you have gone above and beyond, and we continue to appreciate your hard work. I've enjoyed this year and working closely with you, and also the leadership that you have shown in the county attorney's office. We are bringing to the table a nomination for an appointment of a county attorney who brings to the table decades and decades of experience, both in private and federal experience, that will benefit the taxpayers of this community and work incredibly
experience, that will benefit the taxpayers of this community and work incredibly closely with our existing staff. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the personnel committee and particularly our personnel chair, Minority Leader Claudia Bremer, who worked incredibly hard during this process, not with one or just two meetings, but with multiple meetings in a transparent process and one that our HR department worked closely with our county administrator as well to ensure that we were following not only all of the rules, but the financial guidelines with our treasurer's office, and to take a look at how this decision will impact the county overall. Our budget officer worked hard to also come up with solutions and suggestions that are before you today. So that being said, since there are no further discussions regarding 463, that roll call is reflected, and I'll close discussion on 463. As it relates to the roll call for 464, which is reflected on the record, I'm going to ask at this time, upon the request of our county administrator, for an executive session briefly to discuss some personnel matters as it relates to 464. If this board would please make that motion for me, I would appreciate it. That motion is made by Supervisor McGowan, seconded by Supervisor Bruno. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this point in time, we'll enter into executive session. And if only our direct staff here would stay in the room, that would be appreciative. Are you comfortable, Ryan, with Robert?
Your call, Robert. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Amy, Amanda, you're good. You're comfortable? Yeah.